Welcome to our November 1 regular council meeting. Good to see you all tonight. If you guys want a seat, we should be able to find one for you, but okay, you're good. All right, thank you. And thank you all. As you know, we are asking you to continue to wear masks for now. And you can social distance with the way the seats are marked off, I suppose. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's a pleasure to have you here. We'll get right into our meeting and we'll start with the roll call.
Mayor Marshburn.
Present.
Councilmember Vance.
Present.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer.
Here.
Okay, full house. Thank you all for, uh, council for being here this evening. Uh, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Vance, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance, and also he will introduce our invocation tonight.
All right. Stand. Salute, pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
I have the pleasure of introducing the speaker who will be, will be providing us with the invocation for tonight. And, and the speaker is Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Robinson. He is the current pastor of Juniper Level Missionary Baptist Church. And Reverend Robinson?
Yes, sir. Let's pray.
Okay.
Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for all that you have done and all that you continue to do. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon the town of Garner. We pray for the mayor and all, as well as the town and commissioners. We pray, God, that you would get the glory. Bless this meeting tonight. Have your way. In your name we pray. Amen.
And Dr. Robinson, before you sit down, I'd like to give you an opportunity to just enlighten us a little bit on some pretty important things going on out at your church. And with the, with the school out there, I had an opportunity with the town manager to go and, and take a tour. Would you make a few comments about that, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, for being there and for our great young man for being here. Young, I said. We're so thankful that you had the opportunity to come. We are fortunate that we have Juniper Level. We have a Rosenwall School. And a Rosenwall School is a school that was built in 1926. It was in the early 1900s where there was a legislation that came up with, in order to vote, you had to be able to do things. Some just say sign, others say being able to read and write. And at that time, um, in the rural South, there was segregation. And in that, there were no places for African-Americans to attend school. So Booker T. Washington asked Julius Rosenwall, who was, and you know him, if I mentioned the name Sears &amp; Roebuck. So when you think about Sears &amp; Roebuck, the Roebuck part is Julius Rosenwall, and he was the CFO. He built over 5,000 schools, um, in 15 different states. North Carolina being the, had the most. Wait, at Juniper Level, we have the Panther Branch Rosenwall that we've just had the opportunity to restore. And now it is back to its original setting, open for education. Been thankful that we're gonna start an after-school program there as a free after-school program there. We were helping, funded in some grants, and we wanna tackle not only that with this pandemic for the kids to go to school, but deal with parenting classes for the parents, as well as having some kind of counseling. Because with this pandemic, we believe that it's been a nightmare in so many different ways. Our kids are behind, and that we need some counseling, some help. So we are thankful for all of that and, and being there for the tour. It's open for anyone at any time, and we, we're thankful for you all that you do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, I encourage anybody who has interest in history, even if you don't, to, they did it, to go out and see it. They did an amazing job of restoration out there, and that's gonna be used for some very, very, very good purposes. So, thank you, sir. Okay, um, with that being said, we're now at the section of petitions and comments. This is the portion of the meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. Interested parties can choose to appear, uh, should choose to appear in person. And the council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subjects brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation can be referred to, will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff, and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So we have a sign-up sheet outside. Did anyone sign up tonight in advance who wants to speak in, to the council this evening? And even if you didn't sign up, if you're here for purposes of wanting to, to speak to the council, make petitions, if you'll let me know, I will recognize you at this time. Okay? Seeing and hearing none, um, we will move on then to the adoption of the agenda. Council, what is your pleasure? Do you have it before you?
Motion.
Motion moved and suggested by Mr. Vance to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, there is none. So the agenda is approved. Thank you. Now we come to, excuse me?
We do have a person who signed up to speak.
Oh, we do have somebody who signed up to speak?
Oh, okay.
Okay. It's on the agenda, so.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you got.
Okay. Did I miss something?
No, she signed the form, but she will speak at the appropriate time.
Oh, I get you.
Likely for the garden topic, if I had to guess.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's on the agenda, so we're good.
We'll make sure we hear from you then. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we are now to item, I know we have at least one presentation tonight. I see the fire chief is here and some other folks. So, uh, Chief Poole, I will recognize you at this point in time with a special presentation, sir.
Chief Poole is doing a short presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mayor members of council. We're here, myself and Chief Poole, tonight to, um, talk about the actions of our firefighters and our police officers this past, this past September, the 25th of this year, early morning out at Lake Benson Park and White Deer Park. So NC Van, for many people who may not be aware, is an organization that supports, informs, and provides resources to surviving loved ones of homicide victims and others harmed by violent crime in North Carolina throughout the continuum of their experience. We've used this organization several times throughout the course of my career. It's a great resource to have if needed. It's near and dear to my heart. I served as a board member since 2016, and most recently as the board vice president until I stepped down in April of this year. So on Saturday, September 25th, NC Van hosted their 9th Annual No Hope 5K Walk Run Remembering Victims of Homicide. It is a testament to the firefighters and police officers here tonight, their character of those who came out to show support and participate in such a worthy cause. This event is one of NC Van's biggest fundraisers each year, and its success is important in carrying out their mission. So from the police department, I would like to recognize Investigator Callie Stansel, Corporal Cameron Driver, Officer Michael Simon, Crime Analyst Caleb Myers and his wife Andrea, who are here, and Officer Simon. And I'm just gonna give you a little overview of what happened, and Chief Poole can expand on it when he's up here. So that Saturday morning, the individuals here were running in the race when they observed a race participant suffer a life-threatening medical emergency. Officer Marie Apannovich, who was working security detail for this event, heard the commotion and ran over, notifying dispatch of the medical emergency. Andrea Myers, a nurse and also wife to our crime analyst Caleb Myers, immediately began to assess the patient and started chest compressions. Officer Apannovich and Officer Simon also provided lifesaving measures throughout the course of CPR. The other officers and firefighters assisted with resuscitation efforts until other members of Garner Fire responded and took over the lifesaving efforts until EMS arrived on scene. I just wanna say that I'm very thankful for our strong working relationship that the police department has with the fire department. And I'm so thankful and proud of all the men and women who were there that day, who jumped in selflessly to help save this individual's life. And as a result of their actions, he did survive. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Poole now.
Thank you. Chief Smith.
Thank you, Chief Smith. So my phone rang that Saturday, and when it rings on a Saturday regarding the fire department, usually it's not good, but it was a good phone call that morning. So very rarely are we able to truly save someone's life in cardiac arrest, and timing is certainly of the essence. So the, um, when, when the person went into cardiac arrest, the nurse and the, the police officer gave immediate support. And then three of our firefighters were running the race and approached the, the patient. So I'd like to recognize those three first. So this is Seth Bryan. Stand up, Seth. This is Jonathan Fisher and William Woodall. So first off, they agreed to volunteer their time to run into the five, to run into the 5K to support the event. So that, that in itself is an outreach effort that I'm proud of. But not only that, but these three young gentlemen responded and were able to resuscitate the, the person. What is unique about these three is, you think that would be enough, but after they, after the paramedics took over, these three finished the race. So, um, not only did they respond to the call, but they also finished the race. And that says something about their character, not, not about the fire department. So I wanted to thank those three personally for what they did. And then the other two, so the responding units, Lieutenant E.G. Burr and firefighter Devon Simmons, responded and, and gave aid once they arrived on the unit. So they were the, the dispatched unit, if you will, from the fire department. So I, I agree with Chief Smith. It was a collaborative effort, and I will truly, if the cardiac arrest, if the care hadn't started when it did, the probability of the individual surviving would have been very little. When he left the scene on the ambulance, he was alert and talking. So that is truly a lifesaving effort from everybody that was there. So thank you very much.
Uh, thank, yeah. Thanks to both of these departments and for recognizing these folks so ably. I heard about this initially through an email, I believe, from Mr. Dellinger, who was, who was there that day, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So any comments you'd care to make about the?
Um, just briefly, I did not run. I was walking. And it was a sight to see when he crossed over into White Deer, and, um, they, they worked on him for, it must have been seven or 10 minutes. I was all hands on deck. It was just an amazing thing to see, and when he actually started breathing and coughing and, um, it was just amazing to see all of you in action, and we're all very thankful, and I know he is as well. And then I, and they were all done, I started walking the race again, and I know they finished the race because they passed me to get to the finish line. So, uh, but it was a proud moment, and just a great moment for, um, that individual. And sister, I believe, was running with him. So just very thankful that we have so many great people in this community.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Also, I might just observe that White Deer Park's one of my favorites, and I do some jogging over there. Maybe I need to find out when those firefighters are jogging, so when I'm in there, maybe they might have to come pick me up at some point, I don't know. But, uh, no, very commendable, and, and thank you all, certainly a good recognition, and I commend you for, for the way you handled yourself, both personally and professionally. That's, uh, just another indication of the good people we have in our town and how they look after each other, so. So thank you very much. Any, any other council member wanna say a comment or any kind?
I just thank you for what you do, you serve in so many ways, and, uh, thank you, you were there at the right time. So thumbs up. Thank you for your, for the work that you do through fire, rescue, EMS, police, all of you. You did a great job.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm the congressman.
Yeah.
I was like, this woman's always supported our emergency services, and, you know, I think we're all in total agreement on that. And we got the best of the best, and not only that event, and Tuesday morning, we had one right straight from my house, a young man that went into the woods and got killed. And it's good to see all the efforts of everybody working on that. So it's, it's a tight-knit group, and it's quite a brotherhood, so thank you for what you do, and we're proud of you.
I'd like to say thank you also to the firefighters. I've seen them in action firsthand with my son, who had a medical emergency, and it doesn't surprise me, I would say, just keep up the good work, and, and what you're doing for the community is definitely on our hearts and minds. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I would certainly agree with everything that's been said, and, and add a little bit more, there are not enough good things that we can say about the fire department or the police department. We, uh, we know that you risk your lives many times and work very hard in situations that we'll never know about, and we appreciate everything you do.
Okay, thank you, council, and thank you, Chief Poole, and also Chief Smith. Let's give them one more round of applause. Okay, thank you all. We will continue now with our agenda, and the next item on there is the consent agenda. There are 11 items. I'm sure you had a chance to review all of those, and if there are no items that we need to, to, um, take off of the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, for the, uh, motion, and Mr. Matthews for the second. All in favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, and there is none, thank you very much. Okay, we will now go to, well, we don't have any public hearings tonight per se, it's listed on the agenda. We'll go to new and old business, and the first item on there, um, is a zoning issue that, and Mr. Reginald Bowie will lead us through that, and we'll hear your presentation at this time, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I wanna go through factual information of 5001, 5005 Old Stage Road is conditional General case information, the applicant and owners are Playmaker Properties LLC. Location is 5001, 5005 Old Stage Road. And the request is tier one conditional rezoning from single-family residential to community retail, limited number of uses to 21 out of possible 52. Town council conducted a public hearing on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, and the planning commission reviewed the request on October 11th of this year. On a vote of 7-0, the planning commission unanimously accepted the consistency statement below as an own-written recommendation regarding the consistency of the request for the town's adopted land use plans and recommended approval of CZ 2107 to the town council. Here we have an aerial photo of the site. Street view of the site. Adjacent zoning and land use information, which you have in your, your staff report. Exists a zoning summary. It's currently residential R20, and you have all this information in your report as well. Proposed community retail. These are the, the 21 selected uses from the list of 52. The reason for the request is the applicant desires to rezone and market the place to, um, the, the two sites for a potential commercial use. There is currently no site plan on file at this time. Consistency of the request, the request is inconsistent with the 2018 Garner Forward The request is community retail zoning conflicts with future land use map designation of medium Swiftly, Swift Creek Land Management Plan, the request is consistent with that plan. Consistency statement, this request to rezone approximately 1.74 acres, excuse me, from a single-family residential R20 to community retail CR2C 247, conditional district, is not consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Future Land Use Map Designation of Medium Density Residential. The proposed uses for the CR2C 247 are not envisioned for implementing the objectives of the medium-density residential land use classification. And also, the approval of this request will involve a future land use map amendment to Neighborhood Commerce Center from medium-density residential. While the request is inconsistent with the land use recommendation of the Garner Forward Compartment Plan, staff believes that a reasonable case can be made for supporting the overall request, and we have a list of several reasons that you may wish to discuss in addition to your own. Reasonableness. In addition to approving, approving a statement regarding plan consistency, upon the advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Staff recommends CZ 2107, as presented and reflected in Section 3 of this report, recommends town council approval of the planning commission statement of consistency outlined in Section 5 of this report, and further recommends approval of the zoning amendment request as a reasonable one. And here we have a motion worksheet. And what you'll be focusing on is inconsistent yet reasonable. Are there any questions concerning this request?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie, for, for the information that we have in the agenda and your explanation of it. So I'll go around and see if council has questions or comments. I'll start with Mr. Vance down on this end.
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Okay, Ms. Behringer. Okay, Mr. Singleton.
I have one question. I'm probably getting the cart before the horse here, because this is rezoning. But you, uh, we've got the information, the community information in regards to the traffic improvements that they're gonna be making.
Yes, sir. Though the plans have been completed, they're scheduled to, to begin in 2022 and be completed in 2023.
Okay. With no reason, I'm making a, the assumption here that, that the only driveway access on this map is the one driveway, it's gonna be on Old Stage Road, they are not gonna have access to 401.
I believe you are correct.
Okay. I mean, it, it shows one driveway on here on the, the, uh, map we have in our, in our agenda package, and it shows one driveway in there to the two lots, and then also it shows a driveway off of Maxwell Drive. I'm assuming that's, you know, that one off Maxwell Drive, and then the one off of Old Stage Road. So certainly no direct enters. I mean, they're trying to get driveways off with this, the way they're redesigning the road, so just wanna make sure I'm, I'm looking at it right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Was there anyone else who expected to give testimony on this matter?
I don't believe they're present.
Okay. All right.
I have one, just a comment. Yes, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a lot of concerns with this. The, the purpose of conditional rezoning is to limit the options, to give reassurance to the public and the town that the final use will be reasonable, and to narrow this to 21 to 52. There are items on there that are not consistent, um, with optimal land use there, regardless of what happens with that intersection. And some of them are just quite unreasonable. Um, and I don't, I, I can't, I wouldn't be able to vote for it with the list they've chosen. Um, it's just, it's way too broad, and it gives us no insights into what the actual use will be, which gives us no insights into what the traffic patterns will be, which give us no insight onto what the impacts on adjacent properties will be. It, it's not a narrow enough list as presented for my taste.
Other council members care to articulate your thoughts about the matter? Anybody? Before we ask for a motion?
Well, I disagree with what you're saying, because some of the uses are more intense.
Yeah.
And because of the limited access, there's no direct access on 401. Uh, it does make you look at it and think, okay, exactly what are they gonna do with it because of the access off of, uh, Old Stage? And then what you have at Maxwell Drive? I mean, you know, the existing convenience store over there is gonna have, I'm assuming the red is gonna be their drive, I'm assuming they're closing one driveway off 401 and just having them have one driveway. It's hard to tell from that map, but anyway. Uh, again, Mr. Dellinger raised the point is, they're gonna access it, and what are they gonna put there? And with, I mean, depending on what, that's just taking one of the uses, being a restaurant, uh, indoor seating with drive-through, you know, with the traffic flow, take them from Old Stage Road to Maxwell? I mean, we don't know that. So anyways, there's, there's a couple on here that are, are interesting to look at and why they were included, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thanks, sir.
One more.
Just a minute. I'll, yeah. Bill? Okay, I'll go to, could, yeah, could you identify yourself, please, sir?
My name is Rob Baumgart, and I represent Playmaker Properties.
Okay.
I'm the petitioner and the owner.
Okay.
I was gonna speak more to the roadways there. So the driveway on the 5005 Old Stage property, we asked to move that one further down the property line, down Old Stage. And in talking with DOT, they weren't ready to commit to that yet until we had our plans in place in the future. So that driveway will line up with Circle K, ideally.
Okay.
Mr. Singleton. And they're gonna go from four to two access points on Circle K.
They're going from four to two?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
5005 Old Stage, or 5001 Old Stage currently has a driveway onto the old roadbed of the original Old Stage Road that got redesigned sometime ago. We're gonna remove that one completely, remove that roadbed completely, and we'll exit out of Maxwell Drive.
Helpful explanation, thank you.
Well, to clarify, the, so the only access, there will still be the access of Old Stage Road on the one that you're showing here, what you're saying?
Correct. And if all goes well, it would move further south down Old Stage Road, further from the intersection.
Okay. But the property line is just, uh, down here, uh, I mean, these are?
That next yellow driveway you see?
Yes, sir.
It's just above that.
Above that.
So we have a, a fair amount of room to move that driveway down, and when the DOT was making their plans, uh, we requested it to be moved, and it did not end up on their plans as moved.
Now, if you can see the existing driveway on the map, lining up with where the driveway shown here, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for this gentleman? Anybody?
I do have a question about the, um, 40170 overlay, and do the conditions of that after this road is improved and then widened, and there's a certain number of feet from that center of that right away, that will be, uh, basically an easement? Are there uses that then become incompatible with the size of that property?
I'm gonna refer to David on that.
Currently, the list of proposed uses would not conflict with the prohibited list in the overlay currently. You're asking about is, is this acreage or area of the tract large enough to support? You're asking about is this acreage or area of the tract large enough to support? I would think so. Without a site plan, we don't know, but but based on other similar sites, I believe it could contain many of the commercial uses on the proposed list to new parking setbacks and buffers. That would, that would be recombining both of those two lots in into one, trying to develop each one individually would be very difficult, but recombining both lots into one, I believe, is doable.
Thank you.
I'll let this gentleman go unless council has further questions for him. Okay, thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Any other comments from council before we take a vote on this matter? Okay, hearing and seeing none, this action is ripe, excuse me, this, this item is ripe for a motion. You see the proposed wording, and even though it's inconsistent, it's noted that that does not negate the opportunity for council to to approve this for the motion there. So council, what is your, what is your pleasure on approving CZ's 21, 501 and 505 Old Stage Road? We had the public hearing, as you recall, back on the 21st of September. Some of these items were discussed at times hours ago.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 5 of the staff report, and find the request inconsistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Plan, yet I also move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2021-5073, approving rezoning of CZ 2107 as the request is still reasonable in the public interest because it will likely encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding areas.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, for the motion, and Mr. Matthews, I believe, seconded that. So before I call for a vote on this, I'll see if the council has any other observation or comments to make before we vote. Are there any?
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir. One last comment, and the level of uncertainty regarding the road, regarding all of these different uses that are very divergent and could result in so many permutations of businesses or uses that we do not know are compatible, we cannot quantify at this time. Little too much uncertainty for me to be comfortable on this kind of blanket rezoning. This is conditional use, conditional rezoning, to narrow the uses so we have a better idea of what we're gonna get here. That's my piece.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, noted. Any any other comments from council?
And I don't disagree with that. I think in this case, because of the uniqueness of this intersection, the road weren't to be done, that any standing request on here should have a site plan along with it, so we know exactly where it's gonna look like. This is, shows us here, but it's still vague. That's my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, did you want to be there?
Well, just this complete intersection, as we know, 401, they're gonna be doing a lot of changes out there, and all this is definitely commercial development. As I'm sure we've all been through this intersection many times, and I'm surprised it hadn't already been developed, and and all they were requesting was just that one change to be determined, and in and out. Either way, it has to come for us approval anyway, whatever is presented, so we do have that always, that we can use that if something comes up questionable, that we feel like there's issues there, that it don't work, we've got that authority to decline it, and so we're just talking about just a change here at this time. So again, I still support it because we do have that opportunity to approve whatever is gonna be presented to us at a later date.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment in response. It's true, but then they'd be given, they'd be given the right to do certain uses by right, and we would have, wouldn't have the flexibility. I think if we have a better idea of what's gonna go there, then we have a better debate. We can establish whether it's consistent with adjacent uses, inconsistent inconsistent with the intersection that's gonna be there. I think, again, as Mr. Singleton said, the list of uses is is very broad, and with, they all have different site plans that we need to go with each one to make it usable. We have no idea what's gonna go there at this point. I'd like more clarity. It's not beyond the scope of someone who owns the property to do the work, to come up with a project that is more specific, that we can vote on and discuss. This gives a little bit too much latitude, and and actually ties our hands significantly in the future when we want to have a conversation about it. But thank you.
Okay, council, we've heard, I believe, from everybody who wanted to speak, the motion is properly before this body. Motion made and seconded, so I believe the proper thing to do at this point is to call for a vote. Anything you would deserve, Ms. Attorney? Ready? Okay, council, I won't try to repeat the motion, but you have it there before you. So if if you favor the the motion that has been presented, would you vote aye at this time?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. If you're opposed to the motion that has been presented, would you vote no at this time?
No.
Okay. Chair would declare that there are three aye votes and there are two no votes. I believe under these type hearings, the motion does pass with a majority, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the motion is approved, and we will, we will note the concerns expressed by others, but the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bowie, and for others for working on this. Okay, item number two, we'll hear from our town engineer, Mr. Johnson, on a call, a master agreement and statement of work relating to the Bryan Road sidewalks. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is regarding our on-call master agreement that we are putting together in response to an RFQ that went out earlier this year, and to talk about one of our first next design projects that we have in the design queue with Bryan Road Sidewalks. Very brief agenda. As I mentioned, we put out a request for qualifications. I'll talk to you about that and the consultant selections that came along with that, and then walk through the on-call master agreement, which much of this documentation, the presentation will be very brief and touch on it, but you have a lot of backup in your agenda packet. Then we'll talk about the Bryan Road Sidewalks project and the statement of work number one for that, as well as the staff recommendation. So as I mentioned, we had a request for qualifications that went out on April 1st, 2021. Staff received 19 proposals from area firms. We put together a proposal review team that consisted of several staff from engineering and planning departments. After reviewing the 19 proposals, staff recommended selection of three firms, RK&amp;K, SEPI, and Kimley-Horn &amp; Associates. So what we're doing is bringing these to you one at a time, this one being with with RK&amp;K. So this is an on-call contract, so we're looking to put together a master agreement for professional engineering services. This would consist of a, an agreement for an initial three-year term. We would have the option to extend up to two additional years if the services being provided meets staff's expectations, and we could possibly add other scopes of work, whether it be additional services to this contract or possibly other statements of work for other projects. The specific resources and responsibilities will be outlined in a statement of work, which is sort of an attachment to the original master agreement. That will, the scope, the statement of work will outline the compensation and the scope of services. So Bryan Road Sidewalks, it's just a brief picture that kind of shows the Bryan Road, got Bryan Road Elementary down in this corner, you've got Bingham Station, Grove at White Oak, and Sutton Springs, and we're looking to add sidewalk in Kerbin Gutter across this unnamed tributary to Mahler's Creek. So the project highlights is about 400 feet of road widening with Kerbin Gutter, new sidewalk along the east side of Bryan Road. We have to upgrade that existing culvert crossing, more extending it, building up a retaining wall if necessary, and then this would connect sidewalks to between the school and the surrounding neighborhoods. So statement of work number one, we kind of split it up, and you can see more detail in your, in your agenda packet, but the basic services consists of topography surveys and subsurface utility engineering so that we can locate all of the existing utilities along the corridor. It'd be include engineering design with roadway, sidewalk, storm drainage, the coordinate with Duke Energy for street lighting, and put together traffic control and erosion control plans. It would include public involvement, up to one or two meetings with the public, utility coordination with all the private utility owners, as well as any permitting that's required. This is a DOT street, so require NC DOT approval. They'd also coordinate with NCDQ and US Army Corps of Engineers for any impacts to the stream crossing, and there could be a need for a conditional letter of map revision or a, some type of hydraulic permitting through them for that upgrade to the culvert. It would include right-of-way and acquisition exhibits and and to support efforts with the town attorney on any necessary acquisition related to the project, and then putting together final plans, final cost estimates, and bid documents that could be, allow the project to be advertised out to a contractor. The compensation, we kind of broke it up into basic services. There were several services that we we labeled as alternate services because we're not sure that they would be required. It'll depend on our initial coordination with some of these permitting agencies, but the total cost of the contract would be $196,512.11, and we're looking at a time to complete by around July of 2023, and that would also kind of span across some of that acquisition work I mentioned previously. This is sort of a list of the alternate services that are included in that figure. We had some alternate services for 3D visualization that can be used either at public involvement meetings or at council when we bring it back to you, any restaking of right-of-way and easement points as needed. We may or may not need endangered species surveys and the FEMA CLOMAR DOT culvert survey report. There is a water line along here that we're not sure if we'll need to relocate that line, but we've got a figure in there to account for that if it's needed, and then structure design for the culvert head wall if needed. So our recommendation is to, for council's consideration, to approve the on-call master agreement with RK&amp;K LLP, also approve the statement of work, SOW number one, for the Bryan Road Sidewalks project, and authorize the town manager to execute both the master agreement with RK&amp;K and the statement of work number one in an amount not to exceed I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, all right, council, questions for Mr. Johnson? Mr. Singleton, I'll start with you.
Yes, Mr. Johnson, if my memory serves me right, when we approved Bryan Road Elementary, we didn't have the school system run the sidewalk down because of the issue with the culvert and crossing the stream. And I thought I recalled that they were supposed to help pay for a portion of this work. That is a condition, correct?
I understand that 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 was a conversation that was held that was preceded my time with the town. My understanding is that we are going to talk with the the school to see about getting that, yes.
Correct. We will request that they help us, but we'll see what they say.
Is there a condition on the permit that says they have to pay for half of it?
Yes, but since then, new legislation has come out about off-site improvements.
And I don't know whether that study would fall under that. We know the road did, but I'm not sure if the study does. That's why I'm...
The call share in the contract, in the, the condition was to share in the cost of a flood study if needed, not the road, not the work to complete the sidewalk. So again, Mr. Dickerson said, we're gonna be checking to see if the study would fall under, anything that's changed since would change the study.
But the sidewalk will be in the, I'm assuming, in the right-of-way, but it will be on their property, correct?
A portion of it, yes.
A portion of their property. Where they planned one day to build a middle school, that was the plan at the time, which may have changed by now, but anyway, that was the plan. So the condition is they have to support the flood study at the unnamed stream?
Yes, 50, yeah, at 50%.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Beringer next. Anything? Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything? Mr. Dellinger, anything?
No comments.
And Mr. Vance?
No comments.
Okay, nobody else is, you're it for testimony here, is that idea? I didn't mean that in a negative fashion, okay? Thank you very much. So we're, I think you you stated it there, we're asking, excuse me, that the town manager be authorized to execute contracts, consider approval of the master agreement and the statement of work, right? Okay, council, are you ready to vote on this matter? If so, I will entertain a motion consistent with the action requested.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, Mr. Singleton and Mr. Bering, excuse me, Ms. Beringer seconded. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. If you favor the motion that is before you, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
There's any opposition? No? And there is none, so the action is passed. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
May I ask Mr. Johnson a quick question? In this regard, you had three separate firms that we're gonna be working with and three separate contracts, and I know there are three items that we have talked about as far as sidewalk improvements, so are others, are those other projects may go with another firm, or we just doing it one project at a time, depending on what firm selects it?
Yes, so right now, we are currently working with SEPI to develop and finalize the scope of services on another project. We initially had Kimley-Horn scope to do the third project, but that's been the project that we've been talking about possibly doing a public-private joint partnership with a developer, so for, right now, that one's kind of on hold, but we will be bringing those, as we have statements of work for each of those other companies, back to you in similar fashion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go to item three, under New and Old Business. Text Amendment, UDO 2103 Downtown Uses, Form and Character in a Community Tree Canopy Modifications, and I assume Mr. Trezenberg is with us virtually, am I right on that? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Apology. You're, you're very much here in person, sir. Thank you for being here. Recognize you.
When needed to present, absolutely.
Okay, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, how are you tonight?
Very well, thank you.
Let's see, David's got these up here for me. All right, so the first one of the text amendments coming back to you is UDO 2103 for the downtown uses forming character as well as the community tree canopy modifications. Again, we've presented this to you before, no significant changes since the public hearing. You will still see the three different tiers of tree canopy throughout the entire Garner jurisdiction as proposed. So I'm just gonna skip on down here to the relevant plan, land use plan analysis that we went over with the planning commission. We did find this one consistent because it does kind of help refocus some of our energies on the downtown north Garner area by providing... on the downtown North Garner area by providing some more flexible development opportunities, particularly in the CBD. You will see the planning commission summary there, there was just some clarifications from a couple of the planning commission members, particularly as related to how the landscaping would, would or could apply in an urban setting, just to make sure that we were indeed being flexible enough to accommodate things like living walls. And then Mari and Mr. Holton did speak in support, and that was pretty much the gist of the, of the major discussion. And so they did, on a vote of seven to zero, unanimously accept the proposed consistency statement that we drafted for them as their own, and to recommend approval of this text amendment to you. So there we have redrafted the statement as a written recommendation from them, stating that the planning commission finds this request to amend the UDO to modify downtown uses, form and character, as well as community tree canopy standards, that they may support a desired style of development for downtown Garner and build upon the existing context-sensitive approach for maintaining an adequate, healthy, mature tree canopy for future generations. Therefore, this request may be found consistent with adopted land use plans. And then tonight as well, it's incumbent upon y'all to also put together the statement of reasonableness. Again, our, our recommendation is that we do support UDO 2103 as presented, and we further recommend approval of this text amendment as reasonable, and we've highlighted those sections in your motion worksheet so that statement can be made. Glad to answer any questions that you may still have regarding this one, and I know that Mari is here tonight in case you have any questions, sir.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, Mr. Trezenberg. Council, give you an opportunity to ask questions. So, Mr. Trezenberg, I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Mr. Matthews?
No, sir.
And Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Was there any other testimony to be offered on this? Okay. Good, okay. All right, council, I believe this matter is ripe for a motion at this point in time, based on the information you see in front of you there and the consideration of the action that is requested, in general, the adoption of the ordinance 2021-5074, I believe it is.
So, Mayor, I move the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the text amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section five of the staff report as their own. I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2021-5074, approving text amendment UDO dash 21 dash 03, as the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely refocus development on our centers, including downtown and North Garner, allow and encourage shared use and mixed-use developments, emphasize new housing styles and walkable mixed-use locations identified for growth, and align the development code with the town's desired ends.
Okay, yes, thank you, Ms. Singleton, for that thorough motion. It was seconded by Mr. Vance, I believe, okay, down here. Thank you, sir. Okay, council, as we often do just before we vote, if any observations, comments you want to make in regards to the motion, anybody? Okay, hearing none. If you favor the motion that is before you this time, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, vote no, and there is none. So the chair will declare that this motion successfully passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg, for your work on this and others as well. All right, we're now at item four on the agenda under New and Old Business, and Mr. Trezenberg, you're still with us here, right? Thanks, sir.
So the second one coming back to you for a decision is UDO 2104, the text amendment package for community gardens. There has been a little more movement on this one since you last saw it, so again, I'll just kind of highlight what has transpired from planning commission onward. You will see here in the use table, the first in the red, you'll see the, the stars that were added to the Ps that existed before. That was an oversight on our part, just not to put the star in there. The star simply means that there are additional standards and points you to that section 5.3E2. Those standards, we did go over during the public hearing and are listed down here. So again, the star is just another visual cue in the use table in addition to the notes field to make sure that people do refer over to that. Since the planning commission, though, the planning commission did recommend going ahead and adding community gardens as a permitted use in the other residential districts, as well as the neighborhood office district. And I think that just kind of boiled down to a, a difference of how you want to approach it. Sometimes I think we tend to, as staff, try to ease into things a little bit, or we may see that there may be impediments to someone actually being able to do it, a particular use in that district, whether it's something due to lot size or what have you. And so there was a little bit of discussion about existing neighborhoods and existing lots within existing neighborhoods. And I still think that the feasibility of using those lots is going to be very limited, if not impossible. Is that alone worth not putting it, putting it in as a, as a use? That's kind of up to y'all. Planning commission felt comfortable, more comfortable with an approach of, well, let's just go ahead and permit it, the standards are there, if it works, it works, if it doesn't, it doesn't. And we're okay with that, too. It really comes down to a preference and where you all, as a board, kind of want to take it. If the lot size is big enough in those zoning districts, which again, I do think it is going to have to be a, you're not going to do a community garden as a primary use on a 12,000 square foot lot, it's just not going to happen. Between the buffering requirements and the shade that's going to fall on the lot and provision of any parking, you're going to need something bigger. That's not to say that there aren't parcels around town that are zoned R12, but are much bigger. And so, you know, for those, it may work, and I, I certainly have no qualms about, with the standards in place, about allowing community gardens in those districts if, if the lot does work. So we, as staff, decided just to go ahead, for the sake of a presentation to you tonight, to go ahead and, and drop it in there as permitted with standards, but we can certainly go back to the other if you feel strongly about it, and I'll be happy to answer whatever questions, concerns you may have, the best that I can, versus, to one approach versus the other. But the standards did not change themselves since the public hearing, so those three are still in play. The reclassification of a community garden as a class two remains the same. If you'll remember previously, it fell under agriculture, which is a class three, so the buffer was quite a bit wider than under just being a class two. We also did tweak some of the language here in the definition, just to try to make it a little more legalese in, in response to some concerns there. And again, we looked at if there was anything in the comprehensive plan that really spoke to this. There's no specific mention of community gardens or urban agriculture in our current plan, but it generally would be, I think, considered supportive of efforts to do things like that. Certainly, I think it can be argued that community gardens lead to a more vibrant community. There's certainly the opportunity to promote partnerships, and it certainly also helps provide investment in outdoor space. So again, I think finding it consistent is not, is not a stretch. And then we did provide here, again, just a brief summary of the planning commission comments. Again, some questions about the districts, why certain ones were included and others weren't, how, you know, making sure that they understood how the height restrictions would apply, and just some various other, other things about how the screening would work. And then again, we had some comments from, from Ms. Tubilia and Mr. Petheridge, who are both here tonight, and they were in attendance and spoke on the package as well. And, let's see, like I say, it really focused, like I say, on mostly on the, what districts we were providing it in and how some of those standards would be applied. So at the end of the day, we did come down to, again, a unanimous vote of seven to zero with the recommendation that it be included in those other residential districts and neighborhood office. And so their written recommendation was that the planning commission finds this request to amend the UDO to specifically define and allow community gardens in specified districts as a primary use may support improved community vibrancy, the building of new public-private partnerships, and increased awareness of a desirable use of outdoor open space. Therefore, this request may be found consistent with adopted land use plans. Again, it's incumbent upon you tonight to not only decide if you want to endorse that statement, but then also to address the reasonableness of the request. And again, our recommendation from staff is that we do support UDO 2104 as amended by the planning commission. And again, we've given our recommendations there for it being consistent and reasonable, and that it helps to align the development code, again, with the desired end of the town, and to potentially achieve substantial improvement in the quality of life for town residents. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. And I know we have some other folks here, at least one other person who wants to speak to this issue, we'll get to them in just a minute, but I'll ask the general question of council, if you have any questions for Mr. Trezenberg before I recognize another witness. Anybody down here?
A quick question or comment? We had some emails today around the grandfathering in and the change of use for the good of the public. Could you address the issue regarding how this impacts existing operations versus those going forward?
Be happy to. For those gardens that are currently in operation and are accessory to another use, they're not really impacted by this amendment, and they can continue to operate as an accessory use. For anything that would potentially be out there as a primary use, if it had received, if it's received an approval of some kind or other, whether it was under us previously or under the county previously and then came into our ETJ, as long as it's been in operation and has some kind of, you know, valid approval, it can continue to operate as it has under, under a general grandfathering provision. It wouldn't be anything except for something new that was coming in that would then be held to this, these standards that you would potentially be adopting tonight.
Thanks, sir. Anything else down here? Okay. Mr. Singleton or Mr. Matthews?
Yes, Jeff, there's a part here where I was discussing with the planning commission, we talked about infill lots, and I think Ms. Blasko was talking about temporary uses and about lots and buffer requirements. So, Mr. Trezenberg noted enforcement concerns for proximity gardens for residents from neighbors in the past as well. Mr. Trezenberg suggested additional minimum lot size, infill lots might be a solution. Right, Mr. Johnson, the only concern I have is that if you have a community garden and the group, you know, does it for years and they break up, or they do a garden and leave it out there and it's in bad shape, but it's allowed there as a use, what enforcement do we have to make sure that the garden is maintained, or if it's become overgrown, that someone will go out there and take care of it?
Yeah, I mean, so if that were to happen, we would have to rely on our general maintenance, you know, just powers and authority that if somebody's not keeping it up, whether it's tall grass that starts to grow on the site, or anything that becomes a, I would think, a nuisance that would harbor, you know, pest-type rodents and what have you, we could attack it from, from those angles would be the most straightforward in, in my mind.
Okay, so you mentioned here about a minimum lot size for infill lots, it might be a solution. Has that been addressed in what is presented, or?
So that was, I think that was part of the discussion that we were having as opposed to when, when the commission first said, hey, let's open it up to, to more of the residential districts, and we were still kind of coming at it from a, let's ease into this approach. That was something that I threw out there as the possibility of putting an extra condition in where we have those other three conditions, you could put in an additional requirement that, sure, it's allowed in R12 and R9, but there's an added, your lot size has to be an acre, or whatever the case may be. And again, our concern there was just more coming from a, we know that the smaller lots are probably not going to work, but that's where we get to the discussion of, well, do we really need to go ahead and put that in there, or just let it work out that if it's big enough, it's big enough, if it's not, it's not. And like I say, I can see both sides to that, and neither, neither, I don't feel strongly about it really one way or the other, it's just really what y'all are comfortable with.
Okay, and so you feel confident that the enforcement tools we have in place in regards to unkept yards and so forth, this would fall in the same category, consistent residential?
Yes, and they would have to come in with a site plan as a primary use, and if they weren't sticking to what was approved in the site plan as far as, you know, they showed the boundaries of where their individual plots were going to be, and then suddenly they expanded beyond that, or, you know, materials were not being stored in the storage areas provided, we could also come at it from, from that perspective of being out of compliance with their approved site plan.
One more item, I know we, in the conditions, it talks about buffering or the storage areas and everything has to be set back and, and some type of fencing provided, or buffer provided with a fence, but I mentioned this at the last meeting, that, you know, it's been, a lot of these cases, particularly where Thompson Road is, that, I mean, there's going to be, have to be a fence around this whole project, or the wildlife's going to mow it to the ground. So that is allowed, so we need to realize that in any, whether it's this Thompson Road or any other residential site, that someone would most likely put a fence. I mean, I have it on Buffalo Road, my neighbors, the Wilsons and the Simpsons have, have had to put electric fence and the rabbit wire because the deer and the rabbits will mow it right to the ground, so it, it will be allowed.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make sure. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Anybody else's questions for Mr. Trezenberg? I, I have just a curiosity question, I think I know the answer to it, but obviously, we have this group that's come before us now, and we have this proposal before us. I, I guess, would it be unusual for a town our size to have other groups that might have a similar interest, or as far as we know, this current group of folks who are trying to make this happen, would, would, would be the one we have here in Garner, at least for now, anyway?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think as you get bigger, it's certainly very appropriate, and you'll find it pretty regularly, that there's probably at least one just general community-based group that's advocating and operating a community garden. I think going forward, there's definitely, for new development, folks are thinking about incorporating it in as just programmatic for their specific neighborhood. But certainly where, you know, here in Garner, we've got a pretty huge swath of the community that was developed, you know, back in the 60s and 70s, and don't have that opportunity to do it from the get-go. So, yeah, any, any community like that, I think it's fairly common to at least have one group. And then geographically, I think if you get big enough, then it starts to make sense that maybe either it's managed overwhelmingly by one coordinating group, and then there's subgroups around town, or, or different individual groups.
Okay, yeah, that's what I would envision. Okay, thank you, sir. If you have any other questions for Mr. Trezenberg, I'm going to give this individual an opportunity to speak. So if you would come to the podium and state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Tammy Kennedy, and my address is 1218 Buffalo Road, and we've lived there for 20, well, since 93, so. I represent Garner Grows, and I've been with Garner Grows since practically the beginning. And I just wanted to say thank you. We, we did have a few questions, but they were mostly handled via email ahead of the meeting, so I'm not even going to bring them up. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your responsiveness to, to our concerns and to shape this into something that's a little bit more amenable and for, for not just us, but for groups that will come beyond us, you know, as Garner expands, I think, to your, to your question, Mr. Marshburn, I, I could conceivably see three or four community gardens easily in Garner. I know of at least one other place that is interested. I know of at least one other place that is interested in doing it. So I think that, I think it is a very popular, and we have, in doing our petition, we're hearing a lot of really positive feedback. This is something that people really want. I think COVID really brought home gardening in general, and a lot of people don't have access to it in their yards or don't know how. We get a lot of people coming to our garden who come to learn, and then they go back to their own houses after a year or two, and they implement what they learned in their own yards, and they leave us and just kind of spread the green in other places. So I just wanted to say thank you was the main thing.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I would make the observation, this sort of personal data, I guess, working in a garden and doing certain things, just kind of like riding a bicycle, so you don't forget how I grew up in a rural area on a farm, and I remember spending some days in the garden when I didn't particularly want to, but my mom made me. So she, she said that most any kid could pick beans and tomatoes and other things that you picked out of the garden. So I remember those days. And so at any rate, I appreciate the efforts of a lot of people that were involved in this process. I know there were obstacles along the way, and I think probably the towns had maybe not the best experience in the past with, with, with some of the issues. But at any rate, it sounds like a lot of people came together to try to come up with something reasonable to make it happen, and I'm pleased to see that. So council, let's see, were you planning to, no, okay, all right. Thank you. So council, the item is before you, as noted there, unless you want to discuss this further, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Okay, no other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the text amendment request with adopted land use plans detailed in section five of the staff report as our own. And further, move the town council adopt ordinance two oh two one five zero seven five approving text amendment U D O dash twenty-one dash oh four's request is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely achieve substantial improvement in the quality of life of town residents and the reason of the night, which we had previously, align the development code with the town's desired ends.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. And second by Mr. Matthews. Any other questions before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none, so declare that the motion passes. And again, I commend all involved with this to get us to this point this evening. And I wish you well. Hope you can find others, either volitionally or otherwise, that learn how to pick beans and a lot of other things you grow in gardens. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
So you're right, yeah.
One moment of, just a moment of personal privilege. I know we just finished up with the state fair, and I don't know which one wants to speak to it, but I want somebody to tell everyone how many ribbons you all won at the state fair.
I'm honestly not sure. We haven't tallied it up. It's been such a crazy. I don't know. It was, it was over two hundred at the last count. I was, I've been taking them all home and taking them off the produce and stuff. So, yeah, we won over two hundred ribbons at the fair, you know, for the culture department and the flower department issue.
Oh, gracious. That's a lot.
We really enjoyed doing that.
That's great.
Good for Garner.
But you don't have the answer to that. No, it's okay, yeah. I'm sure. Yeah, no, it's fine. No. That's strictly a teasing statement. My wife and I enjoyed it, and we did go out one morning, I guess it was, and went through the exhibit area there, and there are a lot of ribbons out there. So I commend you for your, for your good work on that. Was there anything else, Mr. Taylor? All right. Well, thank you for taking time to be here this evening, and hopefully you got the results that everybody's been looking for. So I commend you all. Thank you very much. All right. You can stick around if you want to, we've got some more business to do, but you can leave also if you need to. Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, we are now down to, I believe, committee reports. So I don't see any noted here. I know H R has been giving us some reports, but are there any committee reports this evening?
None.
None, okay. I don't know of any other committees that met, okay. So I believe I'll recognize the manager this time for his report.
All right, Mayor, town council, you have your Garner info report in the back of your agenda packet. Just want to give you a reminder of some events that are coming up. First, you have music in the park, which is going to be November seventh, which that is, is that Saturday? Sunday? Sunday, right? Yeah, Sunday, one to five, and that's going to be at the G pack on the back lawn, so outside on the back lawn. You also have coming up on November the eleventh, Veterans Day celebration from ten thirty to twelve at Avisboro Road Baptist Church. And the M C will be Mayor Marshburn.
Come anyway, all right.
On November twentieth, Dina Carter will be at the G pack at eight o'clock. And that will be a ticketed event. November twenty-sixth, the tree lighting in conjunction with the night market, and that, the entirety of both of those events will be from five to nine. And you know what time the tree lighting is actually at six, correct? Right, the tree lighting is at six, and the night market will continue to go on. Then we have the Christmas block party. That's going to be at the field at the G pack, not the G pack, the Garner Recreational Center. So it'll be there December fourth from three to five. So got a number of events coming up over the next month and a half. All right, any questions about any of those?
Don't believe I have any.
And they're all listed on our website if anybody missed those. You can go to Garner website or the Garner Park and Rec or Downtown Garner, and it'll have all the information and more. All right, the other thing I wanted to mention is we know some residents are getting some letters talking about the preliminary work for Tryon Road and the need for the contractors to access their property, mainly surveyors, folks like that. So there was some concern, I think, that it might have been related to the project, the apartment project that was proposed in Raleigh, but it's not. It's, it's part of the Tryon Road extension, and it's some work that Raleigh needs to have done. That road is on the map to extend from where it ends just off of Garner Road and go over to Sunny Brook Road. So the contractors will need to do some preliminary work to get that started. So if any of residents got that letter, I mean, that's just regular, normal procedure. It has nothing to do with any proposed projects that might be coming along.
Thank you for mentioning that. In fact, I did receive a call just today, and I didn't probably do a very good job of answering. I needed to have some reminders, and I did speak to Mr. Trezenberg about it. So I appreciate you making a public pronouncement here there. I think our number of folks in our neighborhood over there who are concerned about that, and maybe, I'm not sure what information has gotten out, but I think people are assuming the worst maybe. But I think, thank you very much, yeah. Okay, any questions for the manager in regards to his report?
Just one more thing.
Mr. Hodges.
Mr. Mayor, I want to follow up on one question Mr. Singleton had earlier for Mr. Johnson about the three projects. The SEPI contract that Mr. Johnson mentioned is actually two of the three that I think Mr. Singleton is referring to. Those should be packaged together. The third one that Mr. Johnson references, a potential public-private partnership, is in addition to that, and that is Pearl and Parker Streets. But the Garner Road, missing the gap on Garner Road and the gap on Avisboro Road are being packaged together with the SEPI contract that'll come back to you.
Okay, that's good, thanks.
Okay. Was everything, Mr. Manager, okay?
Yes.
And I know we'll hear from the attorney in closed session, but any reports this time?
Just to remind you that the stormwater management enforcement case will be, the preliminary injunction hearing is tomorrow at two thirty. We're fifth on the docket at two thirty, so it might not be until four thirty, but it's a virtual hearing, and I'll update you when that's over, but it might be early evening before we know anything at that point.
Okay, thank you very much, all right. All right, I believe, council, we give you an opportunity now to mention items under council reports. And so I'll start to my left this time, Mr. Matthews.
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, sir, okay. And Mr. Singleton.
Several items are turned into staff. I'm just wondering, this new reason we have here, applicable reasonableness options, if align the development code with the town's desired ends is going to be the new motto in the planning and engineering and inspection department? I mean, just think about it, and you read it several times, align with our desired ends. Okay, serious stuff. When you work at the polls, you hear comments, and many of them are very legitimate. Concerns, nothing new on Timber Drive, particularly the residential section from the Greenway all the way to and through Avisboro Road with speeding. I mean, they're speeding up and down all drive, Timber Drive, but where the thirty-five is, the residents who live there, I had some, a couple talked to me for several minutes Saturday, are very concerned. We know the speeding is going on. I mean, the traffic team can stay out there seven days a week, three or four hours, and nail people left and right. And we also know that the money for speeding tickets does not come to the town of Garner, it goes to Wake County Public School System. There is, I think, a fee. Other than that, the money goes to the school system, so we're not getting speeders to raise money. Up here at Seventh Avenue, so if you can relay that to the, to the traffic team, I would appreciate it. It's nothing new. We've been at issue for years. Up here at Seventh Avenue at Vandoor, where the sidewalk comes around there, that bend, the corner, there are three panels in particular. One panel is cracked and is, there's a level difference, that's a trip hazard. It's pretty bad. It's right in the middle. And then there's two other panels that are cracked. We need to get that to public works. They need to get that checked. The one that's cracked is, again, it's a trip hazard. So if we could pass that along, please, I'd appreciate it. And I want, I'll email this last one. If someone had a question, I believe I've seen it in our C I P in regards to resurfacing or repairing the tennis courts, both South Garner and Creech Road, and where they are in the C I P. So I'll send that in a, in an email, the follow-up. I did want to report the sidewalk, which is dangerous, and Timber Drive, which I'm afraid is going to be a long, ongoing process for people who don't drive the speed limit. That's all, thank you.
Okay, and I would just observe, and not trying to be funny necessarily, but those who aren't speeding certainly seem to be anxious to speed when I'm driving out there because they seem to like to get very close to my bumper and imply that I should be going along a little faster, but I usually don't cheat much over the speed limit, maybe two or three miles an hour, but there are a lot of folks out there, they're really just driving too fast. I think R A L just did something recently where they went and looked some court cases, and it's astounding to think about some of the speeds they catch people out on our highways out there, a hundred miles an hour and those kinds of things. And speeding does kill people, we all know that. At any rate, excuse me, Ms. Behringer, I'm sorry.
If I could mention, just in relation to the sidewalk work, just to let you know, you will be seeing over the next few weeks, there will be a company that will go around and repair some of the sidewalk. It's part of our phase, plan to fix sidewalk hazards. They're going to be starting on Timber Drive and doing some work also on Garner Road. But we'll definitely take a look at those and see if they're, if they're imminent, we might need to fix them sooner rather than later, but I'm sure it's part of the plan to get this looked at all over town.
Before we add it on to it, was the older section of that, that went around the bend, that's where it is. So it's a, it's an older section of sidewalk, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, just to follow up on the comment Mr. Singleton made about speeding on Timber Drive, Mr. Johnson did work with D O T several months ago in response to some council and citizen concerns, did work out in the field with D O T, and we're awaiting a report back from D O T on some measures that they think could be implemented on that stretch of road. We know we can't do traditional traffic calming measures, but we are waiting on a report back from them, and I believe part of the delay in getting that might have been an extended illness, but we are, Mr. Johnson is working to follow up with them regularly to see when we can get that report back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hodges. Ms. Behringer.
Yes, sir, it seems like I have a lot of the same things coming my way. I have people sitting on my bumper quite a bit like they do you. I wonder if it's the same person all the time. I also have gotten requests to do something about Timber Drive, and I think I've already mentioned that to you, Mr. Hodges, but yeah, it's, we're hearing it more and more and more. Something has to be done. I don't know, I don't have the solution, but we can't, we can't let that go. And then the third thing is I've had some, a couple of people from Georgetown Manor complain to me about the recent, I'm not sure what you call it, a putting slurry seal over the surface in the parking lot, and that it's very rough in some places, that it doesn't, it's in the middle of the parking area or the driving area that it's not even. Two different people on different occasions complain. One lady fell and scratched herself up pretty badly and thinks that that's why, it's because of the rough surface and the, seems like the surface hasn't been finished.
Okay, all right. Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, just two quick things. I may have missed it, but brought to the attention of staff a few weeks ago, the trees that were cut down at the corner of Timber and Hearth, and whether or not that was permitted or it was done without a permit, and if it is even allowed. So I don't, like I said, I don't know if I missed, maybe some follow-up on that or...
We can give you a more thorough answer, but my understanding is the trees that were cut in the back of the lot were permissible. There may be some near the, in the right-of-way that should not have been cut down, but the resident likely did not know, but...
I was wanting to get a report on that, because either it was, I believe that it's not allowed in the Timber corridor to cut twenty-five feet from the road without a permit, and I wanted to know if it had been permitted or not. And if it's not permitted, what's the penalty for doing that? I'd hate to see it happen all up and down Timber Drive.
My supposition is that as an existing neighborhood that probably existed before the overlay, they probably just aren't aware that it exists. Upon researching the photographs, it appears that there was a row of Leland cypress that were there that would have been within that fifteen foot of buffer. So we will be reaching out to them about planting something back. I don't know that Leland's are really ideal, so, but, but yeah. Everything else, though, that's past that fifteen feet, there, there's no protection, but, but we are, we are in the process of getting in touch with them regarding that row of Leland's. We'll try to do a caliper for caliper type.
Is replanting the only remedy, or is there, is there a fiscal fee associated with that?
There could, there is fiscal in there. Yeah, sometimes we use a little bit of discretion on that as to whether or not we feel it was, you know, intentional or accidental, but there is a potential for both, both of those.
Thank you. It's a real eyesore, and I think anyone can imagine it happening in different pockets along Timber Drive. You'd end up with these just open gaping areas, and I know that the U D O doesn't permit it, so we'll correspond a little more about that.
I got this begs the question, because we had Leland cypress at the intersection of Woods Creek and Timber that we cut down to put the sidewalk in. So tell me the difference. We cut them down to put the sidewalk there. There were Leland cypress there, and they've been many, many years at Woods Creek and Timber that we cut down to put the sidewalks. So tell me the difference.
So not knowing the specifics of the particular situation, the sidewalk is usually in the right-of-way. So that could have been the difference. The overlay itself is actually behind the property line, so if the sidewalk was in front of the property line in the right-of-way, that would have been.
You're saying the Leland cypress were not in the overlay? Those weren't?
That could be. If the sidewalk where the, where they got taken out, the sidewalk was put right in the same place, my guess is that the sidewalk is in the right-of-way, and so that's true.
Well, sidewalk were in the same place, Leland cypress would have been leaning over toward them. And the reason that Leland cypress were planted at Hearth and Timber is that was the original two-lane section, and when it widened, that's when they put the Leland cypress there, the buffer. It used not to be like that because it was just the two lanes. So that's why the Leland cypress were added by the residents at the time, I think.
That makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Vance. Okay, Mr. Vance, your turn, sir.
I had one more.
Okay, nothing.
No, I had one more.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I was, yeah, yeah, that's good. I was going to get to you.
I got one more. When are we going to have a draft on these ARP funds? Are we going to have a draft on proposed use that we can modify? I know we're still waiting on the final, but by the time we wait for the final, we'll be up against time to get it done because there's a timeline that I want these to get done. We need something to work from, a proposal. I mean, if you want me to draft one, I'll draft one. People might not like it, but we need to kind of at least have some idea to start working on having conversations around using these funds that we already have. And, and if we get 75% of it there, and the 25 we're kind of wiggle rooming, but we got to start, we got to start looking and getting something together. So what's the timeframe for bringing something back to us on that?
I'll get with you on that. I'll, I'll send you something before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll give you an update.
Okay, thank you very much. I have nothing to add. I believe we covered everybody. So the mayor is going to just mention one thing. I think everybody, hopefully in our town, knows tomorrow's election day. And I am not on the ballot, so I'm going to encourage our citizens to get out and vote in general. But in particular, we've done right much work on trying to get information out on our bond referendum, and I hope folks will, will get out and exercise their right to, to vote tomorrow. Beyond that, as he mentioned, I hope many of you can attend our Veterans Day Celebration. That's something we missed. Was it the last two years, Mr. Manager? Well, we didn't have that in person, anyway. Was it just last year? Yeah, okay, all right. So I'm glad we'll be able to have that in person this year. Okay, I believe that's it for reports. And we do have a closed session. So council, if you're ready, I'll entertain a motion. We go into closed session. Okay, and you see the site there is a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of going into closed motion, would you please vote aye? And it passes, so do we want to stay here, or? Okay, we are now back in open session, having gone into closed session to take care of some matters. I'm going to ask our attorney, Ms. Terry Jones, to briefly summarize our closed session.
Yes, in closed session, I discussed with council three real estate acquisition projects. Action was taken to prevent a waiver, well, action was taken by council not to grant a waiver of a conflict of interest. In another matter, Resolution 2021-2470 was approved by council. This is a resolution of intent to acquire rights of way and easements needed for construction of the White Oak Roundabout by negotiated purchase or by eminent domain. In conjunction with that, council is authorizing the town to contract with outside council to perform this acquisition and litigation work if litigation becomes necessary. And in the third matter, council gave direction as negotiating position with respect to a potential closing of an acquisition deal.
Okay, thank you very much. So I believe we've taken care of all of our business tonight. I know we have on the agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the cause? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move.
Second.
Okay.
All council in favor of that, please vote aye. No opposition, there is none. I declare this meeting of the November 1st council meeting to be formally adjourned.